Okay, Mayor and Councilor, to shop the retail items on the available request. I see you have Vaughn and Gilmore. Although I think from time to time it's about everybody's ass, which is, um, I'm very concerned about the status of the state of retail in Lewisville. Obviously, retail is a big part of our economic picture and our financial picture, so sales tax proceeds for 4B, the new fire police district, and obviously the general fund is area we're buying. So retail is important. This is an issue that has come up numerous times before. It's a very hard nut to crack because the marketplace often has mine of its own, regardless of what you do. There are some things you can do. It's just a question of how much effort you want to put into it, I suppose. We do have some guests here today that are going to be part of the presentation. We have John Quantrick, John Baldwin, catalyst, leader folks that have experience in the retail sector, both from the development and the site location standpoints. Nika's going to start the presentation off. Before she does that, she's going to reference a few studies that have been done in the past. I've got those here. We've got a study that was done by CBS Bolet. I don't remember the date. This was based on Old Town, covered development issues as well as some of the realities associated with retail in Old Town. We had a, this is actually a study that was done outside the city, whether it's in Louisville, but it's very similar to some of the challenges that we face, which was a study by J.W. Wilson and Associates, for the city of Carrollton Plainfield Richardson. We did a study in April two thousand seven using Buxton, several team locations. There was another one that the ED department did in January two thousand four. And so those will be here, and you're more than welcome to pick those up and peruse them through the presentation or after the presentation. I think a lot of what's in there is going to be covered, will be written out by Nika or the folks from Catalysts. So with that, as an introduction, let Nika proceed.
Thanks, Claude, for the introduction. I think you hit on a lot of points and kind of, I want to add, the, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're all on the same page about where we are going with retail and the point that the mayor brought up last night if we were talking about our 2025 plan is that it's a changing environment. And we have changed. Louisville has changed a lot because 10, 15 years ago, we weren't the only gaming town for retail with our neighboring cities. That has drastically changed, and that has really impacted our retail market and what we have in town. So we wanted to give you a little history of where we've been, you know, different types of retail, how do you attract retail, how do you do redevelopment for retail? And again, what Claude said, what we have been doing, we haven't been sitting on our hands for the past 10 years knowing that the market is changing. We have been doing a lot of market studies and to see where we're going. It's just, it's a slow process and new development coming on. It makes it very difficult to make that change happen as quickly as we wanted to happen.
Can you make that clear?
So we all know the importance of retail. It helps broaden the cash revenue, increases employment, satisfies citizens' desire to shop at home, and improves the communities that live in other businesses and key businesses here. We know we get a major share of our general fund revenue from sales tax, eighteen point eight million dollars last year, very comparable to our property tax. So thirty-one percent comes from our sales tax, and thirty-four percent comes our property tax, which is almost a third of our general fund comes from retail, sales tax. So it is extremely important, and we realize that. You have different types of retail. You have freestanding retail, like in Walmart, other restaurants, basically building the go within their, just individual buildings within an area. You have community retail, which is your shopping centers, also your type anchored shopping centers, or something like Garden Park or Better Plaza. You've got power centers that have the large retail boxes and several boxes in the world. That's the Target Center or Lakefront Crossing. And then, of course, you have regional malls like History Mall. Now, again, I remember when I first came here, the regional mall was under construction. We were one of the, the only city in the area at the time suburb that had that larger regional mall twenty-five years ago. And regional malls have a huge competition. Every city wants to get a regional mall. And so we are actually very lucky to have our regional mall, have History Mall in the city. It's just that now, after, after History Mall was developed, then we also have Stone Wyman, Crystal several years ago that has created competition. Then we had the Great Five Mills Mall just down the street. So all of those dynamics have changed. So what affects occupancy of retail areas are primarily demographics in the trade area. Number one, it's the biggest issue is the demographics in the trade area that determines the occupancy and what type of retail you're going to be getting, with various types of shopping centers. Traffic patterns, daytime and nighttime populations, surrounding retail competition, and community growth, and expanding population base. So what I talked about, some of the competition we have now that we didn't have before, so those are some of the realities that we have to deal with. These maps are, if you look at them, you know, they're very general, but it's extremely important to look at the dark shades on the map. This is area growth pattern from nineteen ninety to two thousand. And as you can see, growth is going towards the east. Look at, look at Sprisco and what's the growth pattern. That's the largest growth pattern in our area. We still had, of course, pretty healthy growth between nineteen ninety and two thousand in Louisville. Look at Flower Mount. Flower Mount's getting pretty, pretty healthy growth, and of course, you know, down South Lake, Coppel, that area. Now, future growth pattern, this has changed now. This map has really changed as we are going towards the dark shades, which we're not growing as fast, but those other areas are pretty much growing. So the population base is actually going to our east and west in Flower Mount, Argyle, and then south to South Lake and those areas. This is a population density because that also determines, density does determine the type and quality of retail that you're going to be getting. And then this is the household density that also is the determinant of spending patterns. Now, average household income is, again, extremely important on top of that list, especially for what type of retail you're going to get. So looking at this map, you can see where the average household income is. You can see why South Lake is getting a South Lake Times Square. It's primarily due to that average household income and how much retailers can draw, pull that money, basically, from those households. And this is the retail expenditure per household. And again, as you can see, the darker shades, the greener shades are in that Colleyville, South Lake, Flower Mount, Bartonville Double O, and then in our, on the east side, in our Castle Wilson.
So when you talked earlier about demographics really driving the retail, basically, it's the financial demographics.
It's called.
Well, what I'm saying is, the cultural demographic is, you have a cultural group that their house, expenditure for a household is thirty thousand, you're going to have one group of shoppers. If you have a, the same cultural group and their expenditure per household is two hundred thousand, you're going to get a totally different set of retail for that same cultural group because the expenditure per household is much different. Right?
I also think it has to do with what they buy culturally.
That's exactly what I'm saying, but you can say if they've got two hundred thousand, they're going to shop at Nordstrom, they're going to shop at different stores, where if they've got twenty thousand, they're going to say at the shop at the lesser expenses.
I think it's the, I think the neighborhoods or the surrounding population, you know, determines what stores they want to go to, and that's what they buy at. That's why Hobby Lobby, you know, like moved to where their clientele lives, and that's what it is.
You're missing a big deal on this, too, is the age of the people that are living there. The older you get, the less you spend, and at least on retail items.
Which is another demographic.
Yeah, and if you look down at Farmers Ranch, same thing down there. The Farmers Ranch is an older population with a new demographic moving in, and so you hit both sides there. Quite a lot of income, or at least disposable money, but they don't spend much, retirees in particular.
So I think not only income, Mayor, but also age, also if there are single, basically, you know, single people spending somewhere else, because they spend more, for instance, on restaurants and being out. So it's a lot of different factors that I think Jason and John could be talking about, including about that. So what's the trade area? And that's basically all retailers look at, and again, Jason and John will be hitting on that. But it's a geographic boundary established by each retailer as to what they think that they expect to draw from the customer. So they don't go beyond that. If, you know, you're living a hundred miles away and you have a shopping center, they feel like people are not going to drive unless it's extremely, extremely special, or they don't have something in their area. It's pretty much a trade area, essentially. And it can be defined by a distance or commute time or a distance range from where the center is. And of course, again, we talked about the demographic makeup of our region, and the neighborhoods that are established to determine the types of establishments that you have. So these are our major retail locations in Louisville, primarily History Mall, around History Mall on thirty forty along I-35, and our major street intersections such as Main Street and Sports Center. For instance, this, as an example, this is the Garden Park Trade Area, which is ten minutes drive time. As you can see, primarily, it is Louisville, parts of Flower Mount, and primarily mostly our city limit and parts of Flower. And now, this was developed before Flower Mount had their shopping centers. So now that probably Flower Mount has their own shopping centers on twenty-four ninety-nine, this trade area has shrunk a little for Garden Park. Better Plaza, again, primarily our city limit, going a little down to Coppel. And Jason and John have done some studies, actually, in that particular trade area on the south side, and it's still pretty much the same. History Mall Trade Area, of course, a little larger again, going more into Carrollton and Coppel area. But as you can see, their trade area doesn't extend beyond our city limit on the west side. It doesn't go into Flower Mount because those guys also go to Great Five Mills Mall, they go to South Lake Times Square, and of course, now they go to shops at that time. And our Old Town Trade Area, now, this is a little different. This is a trade area, but as we're trying to go through that, establishing a very unique area where people would drive farther to get to that area. Again, we talked about it last year, about establishing a sense of place where people just want to go, not to shop, just to go. So while they're there, then they'll shop. So this is someplace that we can create, although, as you can see, the trade area is primarily our city boundary. But I think if we create that unique environment, then people from outside of the trade area will come in to be part of that unique environment. So this is primarily, if we combine all of our trade areas, we can see that, you know, again, we're going a little east, a little west towards Flower Mount and south to Coppel. We do have aging shopping centers. This is how Webster describes or has retail glide, which is something that in first role, whether it's hope and ambition or impetus progress or prosperity. And what affects retail glide is individual maintenance of retail properties, conditions which make consumers feel unsafe, traffic conditions, loss of major anchors that we have experienced in some of our shopping centers, overbuilding of the market. Actually, looking at the market, again, I want to refer to Jason and John, they cover that. We are overbuilt, actually, in this area in general. We are overbuilt on the retail market in the Texas area. And we have challenges to redevelopment. Redevelopment is a lot more difficult than redevelopment, basically, when you have a vacant land, there's redevelopment. So redoing the shopping centers, and we have experienced that. First hand, as many of you know, the, I generally don't get into the detail, but primarily, the owner of the shopping center is selling a shopping center. Whoever is buying it to redevelop is truly buying a vacant land, so the difference in price and making those numbers work becomes very difficult because it's not vacant land. You have a lot more cost to redevelopment. So full centers, a lot of, a lot of owners of the shopping centers feel like full centers do not warrant additional investment because they're renting it. So they're sort of, they're getting their rent out of it. And they have, we have perceived extensive code requirements, although, you know, Eric is here, you can chime in or jump in. We do encourage a lot of redevelopment and talk to them about flexibilities, you know, if you redevelop, we'll give you flexibilities. Still, there is that perceived code requirement that they just don't want to touch, basically.
Yeah, I think that perception is not necessarily related to Louisville.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, it's everywhere, doesn't matter really where they're at. Most cities have those that are as aggressive or more aggressive than ours. So anybody who was redeveloping in one of those cities would have significant challenges relating to bringing things up to modern day standards. So the issue is that they just don't like to do that. They'd rather sit on their hands and keep collecting grant if things are falling.
And then they feel like the aesthetic improvements is not going to bring them higher level of test. So they feel like they're spending that money, it's not going to give them anything, which I personally disagree with, I don't know what these guys, the experts would say. And trade areas are shifting from the existing standards. So as Claude said, we have done quite a few previous studies to, one, understand what's happening, and two, how to rein in the decline of our retail areas. So we've done a study in two thousand four, which focused on Main Street and issues associated with nearby residential areas, the rapid school enforcement, crime rate, those kinds of things, and described the aging, aging centers and the need for aesthetic improvements, and focused on redevelopment of residential areas because that's very important, having new residential areas, creating that new, new generation or that new customer that then can impact the retailers that you have.
Actually, that part of the study was really getting at the issue of the local demographics, because people live somewhere in that trade area. So if you're trying to change the demographics of that trade area, you really have to change whatever's going on in the residential areas surrounding them. So this was a little bit different in that it didn't focus exclusively on the retail business properties themselves, but also looked at what you might do to change the demographics on the residential side. A couple models that we had at were the Farmers Branch, Branch Crossing model, where they had a fairly limited program that was focused on redeveloping single family, and then the Fort Worth Urban Village model, which was more aggressively focused on multifamily.
Which is, again, if you remember, last year, we had talked about some of our older shopping centers, that we could turn them into mixed use development and add some residential, actually, right there within one distance of the shopping center. So you're shrinking, you're like a little plaza at thirty-eight, adding more residential, but adding a higher quality retail to that mix of residential. So the study recommended specialized redevelopment ordinance and specific strategies for targeted areas and aggressive incentive programs and the use of ED sales tax, that's the 4A. We've never, we've never gone that route. And the outcome was basically zero interest from our commercial properties, but they had no interest in enhancing appearance, as we talked about in the previous slide, that they felt like it's not going to change their tenant mix. And we had occupancies in the ninety percent range, and they were happy with that, and we had no significant support for the ED sales tax to offset the market forces. We lead Buxton Community ID in two thousand seven. Buxton is an organization that basically comes in, does this huge market study of your consumer profile, based on their credit card spending, and they have three variables, after months, age, and children at home, and even more than those people spend their money. And then they match you with the, so basically, their purchasing habits for recreation media, everything else that they buy, drive time, and then they match you with retailers that they believe would be a match for your community. And then they leave it up to us to go out there and reach out to those retailers. And again, Jason and John will touch on that because sometimes that's almost like you try to contact them, you go out there and send them information, it's like all those systems, like all. So the marketing improvement. And we do, we do a lot of that. I mean, I C S D, when I go, I meet at least with fifty retailers and give them my information, our demographics, what we're looking at. But again, it's one of those things that it takes a lot more than review several times, sending them information, takes that, somebody constantly out there marketing to bring community success.
The Buxton study attempts to segment the market further than this pure, in terms of primary ingredient in that, but they tend to blend some of the socio as well as economic factors, more from the standpoint, not purely of socio demographics, but behavioral demographics, what types of people are within the community, what are their goals and objectives, what types of things do they like to buy, what types of things do they prefer to shop for, how do they like to shop, things like that. So it kind of blends pure income demographics with some behavioral aspects as well. And it attempts to identify and recommend retailers for those areas.
So the areas we looked at was 407 and Summit, Main Valley, FM thirty forty in McArthur, now 407 and Summit, as you all know, is still undeveloped, major undeveloped vacant land, we still had a huge occupancy there that we really, really need to think about, what we're going to do about there in the future. So examples were at Main Valley, they recommended Lincoln's Paul's Jr., yours, focus Bank, Post, Oakwood, Chabs, those are examples of what we can have at Main Valley. And then FM thirty forty in McArthur, FM Icana, the Pride Sporting Goods, Care Express, TJ Maxx also. And then we have made, outcome is that we did make establishes contacts, but also after the study was done, we got into that recession, and that kind of was a leading factor. While the retailers were, they were developing, they were expecting, so that.
And interestingly, on those locations, the vast majority of the, the quote retailer recommended restaurants, who pursue this potential to target its sales.
And then, of course, the split Old Town market study, I highly recommend, the council hasn't had a chance to take a look at it. It's an extremely detailed study, and it gives you very good insight into what, what our market is, and if you get a chance to take a look at it. And it's a detailed recommendation for Old Town redevelopment, focuses on infrastructure, what do we need to do to attract the businesses? And actually, the city has taken a lot of those recommendations and we moved forward, and I think that is definitely going to contribute to the success of Old Town. So their recommendation was to purchase a lumberyard, funeral home, conversion to parking, so provide more parking, expansion of the plaza, meeting hall or new facility that we're sitting in. So a lot of those recommendations were accomplished. And then they also said to focus on the residential market, bring more residences into Old Town, and sidewalk pedestrian ways, recommended over six million dollars spending in Old Town. We did, as I said, the city did follow up with a lot of these recommendations, and I think a lot of good things have happened. And we have made multiple attempts to attract residential developers, just FYI, we could have been very close. And so what happens is the studies were done, we implemented the recommendations, we used data for proactive marketing and recruitment, we have made public investments to leverage private investment, we've created a transit oriented development plan now two years ago to entice new right type of development to Old Town, and we're in the process of finishing up the I-35 redevelopment plan to aid in redevelopment along I-35. So what can we do? We can change our customer, which is, you know, basically, bring in new consumers from other places, or change what the redevelopment potential, change our consumer. We can enhance the marketing to the consumer, so proactively marketing Louisville in the region, and provide incentive to retail property owners to refresh existing properties. I think that's very important. We really need to deal with our aging retail and basically make that, make them look more refreshed, so people would want to go there and shop versus all the shopping centers that we have in the olden cities. And then create a reason for property owners to raise the standard. We have, we are, and we have established adaptive reuse policies, we just need to strengthen them more, create demand for some residential densities, that especially in Old Town, review ordinances to make sure that ease of redevelopment, that people don't have that perceived notion that, you know, the quotes, they cannot redevelop their property, and adopt the company's redevelopment and marketing plan. So new destination retail, that's extremely important because that's what the new consumer wants now. They don't want to go just into a car, drive in front of a strip center and shop, they actually want to hang out and experience the area. So destination retail is extremely important, we are working, of course, we have our Old Town, the lake plan, so all of those can become part of our destination. We can use lessons and experience of other similar cities and situations, which John and Jason are going to cover, ask the expert, which is again, people like John and Jason, and provide adequate funding to affect the market forces. But with that, I'd like to introduce John Baldwin and Jason Quantrick. They are the firm of catalysts. They have tremendous amount of experience in the field of retail and retail improvement. And they've been working primarily for two areas, the two are familiar with, Roanoke is one of their, one of their customer cities, one of their clients, and all the restaurants that you see in Roanoke, Jason and John have been very instrumental in those, bringing those restaurants to Roanoke. They're also working with the city of Arlington, same thing in downtown Arlington, they're still trying to change their image. And I'll let them say just a little about, about there.
Okay, I'll step in here off.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to bring up.
There we go. John Baldwin here, a part of Jason. We have a lot of slides, so we'll make this fairly quick. Ask questions, so this is going to be interactive, sort of ask questions. And just to give you a background of our background, I've been the corporate real estate side. I've been the site selector, site director, site VP for the Blockbuster, Starbucks, La Quinta, Valvolines, Cece's Pizza of the world. Been doing this over twenty-five years, so I'm the corporate real estate guy. My job was, I opened fifty stores in this geographic region, California to Florida, whatever, I'd have to assemble the team and do it. Jason would be a part of the team because I actually hired him fifteen years ago when I was living out of state to be my local broker developer. Jason's background is development, brokerage and development for CBS, Walgreens, and Target. So we bring that aspect, the two different aspects, and combine it for retail, and that's all we've done. So we're going to talk about the about us, current conditions, the catalyst areas. Yeah, every city has some catalyst areas, consumer and retail trends. When Nika was talking about some of those slides, as a retailer and a developer, but retailers, we have, which is data, we're just crunching data, it's very scientific now. And we could go off of that because what it is, it's trade area. The trade area is key. Merchandising plan process, that's what we do. We get hired by private side and city side to do retail merchandising plans, case studies, and next steps. So these are some of the cities that we've worked with. There's big cities, small cities, we're doing work for DFW Airport, and it works very, very well. Every, every place that we've touched, we've brought immediate and long-term retail benefit. So this is just, let's see, there, now this. And originally, this process, the merchandise and plan process was going to be kept in the private side. It got brought over to the public side via some larger planning firms, such as the Freezy Nichols of the world. They would come in, and then they would see that we were actually on the ground doing stuff, so they'd bring us, they would incorporate us, and that's how it got brought to the public side. Pardon me, this, this shows kind of busy side, some of the cities on the left-hand side. And when you go to a city, not everything's the same. Certain cities want certain things or need certain things. And so we have corridor analysis, office, retail, hospital. Retail now is hospitality, it's medical, it's changing rapidly. And that's the fun thing about retail, it's always changing. And a good example of that is medical now. And a good example of that is medical now, how the medical facility saw a bunch of vacant strip centers, they moved in there, they took it over. It makes total sense because why go to a hospital if you need an MRI or some blood work when you have a strip center that offers easy access, good visibility and you're in and out fast? So that's, that's an example of that. Current conditions, okay.
I, I think when you talk about retail, certainly for a lot of reasons, you have to look at the macro indications and certainly there's a global economy. We pay a lot of attention to what's going on globally and you know, the crisis in Europe and specifically what's going on in Greece has a big impact on the United States and our economy and consumer confidence. So just, the whole purpose of this is just to get your kind of ideas going around, you know, the macro economy and some of the shocks that we feel. Right now, you know, from a global standpoint, we're not anticipating a lot of growth and that's true domestically. So I really enjoyed this slide, it says on the plus side, we seem to hit bottom. Actually, I have a little bit more confidence in 2012 than some people, but if you look at income, we had a lot of discussion earlier about income, we're about $2,000 off per household of income. If you want to look at that on retail roughly, Charles Holt spends about 26% on retail goods and services, so you know, you take 2,000 and spread that across the economy, that's a lot of offset for the economy. That's had an impact on certainly foreclosures. You know, fortunately, I guess it was this morning, unemployment was down to eight and a half to now 8.3, which is exciting, but there's still about 22% of the workforce that has stopped looking for work or is actually kind of out in that unemployment realm being tracked. One-fifth of the population has had their, you know, residential properties with negative equity. You guys have watched your home values shift, certainly that has a big impact on consumers and their spending propensity. And this year, I think we'll see GDP roughly flat or the same as it was in the last quarter, so we're not anticipating a lot of significant growth. Although retail specifically, in general, is still expanding at a very slow rate, we're seeing the store numbers increase, should increase probably somewhere around 20 to 30% this year, but the categories that are expanding are differently. So you know, the different brands are taking advantage of some of the economies. With unemployment, there's a lot of vacancy correlation, so we spend a lot of time looking at vacancy more as a trend from a macro standpoint. When you work in a community, you really have to look at vacancy in a micro basis. So most of the projects that we work on, we actually look at vacancies at individual assets and try to identify, is this an economic issue, is it a positioning issue, you know, is it an aesthetic issue? So there's a, there's a lot of factors, you know, positioning and whatnot to go into vacancy. But if you look at vacancy overall in the economy, there's certainly a lot of trends and it's certainly informative. And then we'll get into different vacancies, but you know, I know, I just circled this Ridge Mall. Fortunately, the malls obviously haven't, there hasn't been a lot of net new malls. Highland Village is somewhat unique in this marketplace, it's got a very compact trade area and we can talk about that. But there hasn't been a lot of new growth in malls, so the mall tenants are basically stabilized and you had concepts like North Park redeveloped. So our Texas economic conditions, and I had another slide that was much more ego centric than this, but we've got a lot to brag about, obviously from a population increase, we've had a 20% increase in population and we picked up almost half of all job growth and so when you look at, you know, the impact of that on retail, that's certainly very specific and valuable. And we've got a lower unemployment rate, although our unemployment has been affected more by the influx of population that's coming here that have been unemployed. So even though we're jobbing, we're getting jobs, we're also getting unemployed population, so that's offsetting each other to some degree. But we are seeing favorable sales tax increase. But the interesting thing is, is there's obviously with all this growth, there's unintended consequences and I mentioned that we also gained unemployment, still one out of 1,000 homes, certainly not quite as significant as a national phenomenon, have been foreclosed. And sad, the true, we've got the highest percentage making the minimum wage, so although we're employing people, we're not paying them very well. And if you look at long-term statistics on even education, we rank 26th in the nation on education, so we still have some work to do. We've got some bragging rights and certainly we're getting a lot of jobs and housing growth, but there are, you know, some micro issues that you have to pay attention to. Nika mentioned this earlier and I think this is important and this is really how we got into the space or being utilized, but cities can certainly be more proactive in developing plans and pursuing retail, only because data has become more and more available, more and more accessible to retailers and retailers are learning how to utilize data, picking better locations and leveraging off of that. So the more retailers use science and less art, then the more predictable you can be on, in essence, underwriting a market for a national retailer. And I'll get into that process here in a bit.
And just to let you know, as a retailer, we have at our fingertips, you can give us an intersection, an address or whatever, and from that, from my keyboard, I can get the trade area, the population, whatever I want at my fingertips, leakage report. So retailers already have all this information, it's how we use it and we'll get into that as well.
Some of the bigger issues that we see, I think cities often lack what their true strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats. They, they look at other communities and peer communities and then try to compare themselves with peer communities. And in essence, we talk about demographics and, you know, psychographics or socioeconomics and every community is unique, although there are some parallels and comparisons that you can make. But really truly understanding your drivers or your ingredients are available and using those in a way to help merchandise your market is much more important than trying to keep up with what's going on in South Lake or what's going on in a colony or, you know, so on and so forth. But I would say that in visiting with Nika, I think you guys are very proactive and have a pretty good pulse on, you know, how to leverage I-35 and the redevelopment and how to, you know, in the process of redeveloping Old Town and some of these areas. I also think, and this is significant, we're seeing this in, as Nika mentioned, in Roanoke and downtown Arlington and these places that have been neglected, downtown Louisville. I think you're seeing South Lake town centers and downtowns being redeveloped because people want to go to authentic places. And so I think that this redevelopment and the opportunity is certainly going to take place in either organic, you know, areas such as Old Town or new developments that integrate or new urbanism and placemaking opportunities. It doesn't necessarily have to be purely all new urbanist and all walkable, but I think building a strip center that's 16,000 square feet with, you know, double row of parks and, you know, quite honestly, very bland, is neither appealing to most communities or the consumer. And so I think there's an opportunity to upgrade some of the development standards and make a difference. And ultimately, I think through the aesthetics that we were talking about, it doesn't really matter, Nika said, I think it really does. If you look at the shopping centers that have placemaking components and you look at their return and their net operating incomes, they're certainly being rewarded for that. But as the cultural shifts, the average shopping centers are going to continue to see a big additional risk of vacancy going forward. And I think this is very important, what you need in your city is probably a lot different than what you think you need. And so really just aligning those objectives and, you know, are you pursuing the right brands, are you incentivizing the right opportunities? And so I think that's something that we can certainly talk and explore. We were talking about this earlier, about, you know, really keeping up with the Joneses and I think this is the biggest issue, and I'm not going to pick on Colin, I like to call any folks, but giving away 40-year sales tax and 40-year property tax on a project in my mind, that never pencils out is not smart. And I think there was probably more ego in that decision than a financial model. We're all about incentives and subsidies and grants and you can see a lot of projects where that has worked, but I think we need to be very careful about not subsidizing opportunity, but really helping bridge the gap, but with the right opportunities and with catalyst opportunities, it certainly makes sense and start to pencil out. And I'll speak some more to-
Did you refer to the furniture?
Furniture thing. Great project, I mean, phenomenal sales tax, but and I'm not going to underwrite, you know, that from this perspective, but you know, I might have, if I was in their position, I might have given away the sales tax and property tax even on that user, but not on the entire development. And I know the Collet guys and we were involved in a lot of communities that were pursuing that, I think it's a great opportunity for Dallas to work. But I think the city had an opportunity, they gave up all the upside as well, so they're not able to capture any real benefit of that, so. So let's get into the science of retail and how all this really works. Here's the four things that we spent a lot of time tracking and I think retail can be very complicated, but we look at four things. What is the population? And we talked about demographics, you know, the housing density and their income has a lot to do with the quality of retail and the type of retail that you can track. If you've got enough people, enough income, you can, you have spending potential. Then you get into all the cultural shifts and issues and age and all those changes and there's a lot of nuances. Visitor economy, and I know there's a slide that mentioned that, visitor economy like retail is one of those things that you can actually pursue and change your geography and change your trade area. It's hard to necessarily go proactively pursue an industrial group or an office group that you, you know, have no idea where they are, if they're even interested in coming to the marketplace and there's just thousands of them out there, but it's hard to be proactive. And then, then you get into, you know, you know, jobs and peering and workforce, but again, you can pursue those opportunities, but it's hard to be really proactive on workforce. But visitor economy is something that you can certainly be proactive on. I don't know many cities that said, gosh, I wish we really had more traffic, you know, we need to figure out how to get more traffic on our roadways. But there is a relationship between traffic and retail potential. And so if you've got, you know, I was here really early this morning and watching the, you know, traffic patterns here in Old Town and watching all the cars come to the core main town, and if there was the right operators that catered to that AM business, there would be an opportunity to pass or capture some of that passing traffic. You're not going to capture a hundred percent, but you know, three, four, five percent might be realistic. And a lot of our work on the commuter population stemmed from some research, some primary research that we did at DFW Airport, where we actually measured the employees at DFW and the workers that worked around and the commuters that passed through the airport through primary research and we were able to actually predict the amount of square foot of retail demand in commercial and office using traffic patterns and some of the other data. So very, very interesting things. And then thermographics, which is basically workforce and then we kind of cheat and lunk some other things in the thermographics such as student and medical. If you have a campus or if you have a hospital, there's patients and visitors and those things are additive in your, kind of your, in your retail mix or your demand.
And an example of this as well, very simple one, when I was doing resource for Starbucks, if I knew there's a high school nearby within a certain distance, I could bump my sales up by $17,000. That would allow me to be able to build a bigger store or pay more. But that plugs into thermographics, that's, that's an example.
And then the other, the other kind of natural ingredients are, we talked earlier about, you know, political risk or policies and we used to measure projects that we pursued based on margin, you know, how much money are we going to make from a developer's perspective? We looked at disimbted risk, if it was multi-party tracked, we had to symbol how difficult are the property owners going to be really work with. The other thing that we looked at is how difficult, you know, how crazy is the city going to be, you know, how long is this entitlement process going to take and, you know, and so if we had all the, you know, the same margin and same, you know, kind of acquisition and economic risk on two sites, but we had an opportunity to develop in a city that was very proactive and fairly transparent and we had another city, we never, you know, we weren't really sure if we're going to get out at the end of the tunnel, then certainly, you know, that has a weight in kind of this overall criteria decision-making process. So let's get into a little bit on the ingredients. We've been tracking Panera, actually we've got a great relationship with Panera. Go back six years ago, their average unit volume was around 1.6 million, which is a great number for an operator. There's been some cultural shifts, these fast casuals are becoming more and more popular for a number of reasons, you know, ticket prices, you don't have to tip a waiter, so it's kind of a trading down opportunity for some service level businesses. But Panera started realizing that their stores that they were opening, you know, some of them would be a million four and they'd do horribly well and some of them would do two, you know, 2.3, 2.4 million dollars and so they had a really wide swing on performance. And so there wasn't a lot of predictability and so they started looking at the nuances of the location. What are the other operators around them? Was there a Target, was there a Walmart and was there Boe? What was the total square footage of other retail or other office or other businesses around them? What are the traffic patterns? And then they got into things like, you know, demographics, what is the income and rates and some of the socioeconomic factors such as also psychographics, which is what is the, what is the cultural, you know, composition of the marketplace? And as they started to learn more and more about it, they started realizing that certain ingredients that were available at certain concentrations, their store performance was generally better. And so they started developing a tighter and tighter market plan and picking locations that had these, these factors in greater concentration. And they kept looking at the model over and over as they did this and so they were able to take their average unit volume from about a million six a few years ago to about 1.8 million within the last couple of years. They've even able to refine their program even more. Currently, Panera's average unit volume is hovering around 2.1 million dollars. So this can tell you that, you know, from a proactive standpoint or the importance of data or the importance of science and choosing real estate locations is becoming more and more important. And this is an important fact because if you can understand the factors around a retailer, then you can start looking at the ingredients in the community and correlating, are the ingredients in my community looking a lot like the ingredients of Panera in a similar community? And so then you can start to see which operators not have kind of a similar probability of pursuing different communities. So this gets into, again, the different demand ingredients, so what does your workforce look like, you know, where are the inputs coming in from an area? What are the, what are the commuter traffic patterns look like or if you're at a mall or even an urban location, what does the, what does the pedestrian traffic look like along some of these roadways? And then what is the residential, this is where you're going to get most of your demand and then we also look at visitor economy. Downtown Arlington is a classic example. There's a lot of factors that went in, they were involved in a big study, champion study that they worked on for a number of years. But with the additive of the additional visitor economy with the stadium and Rangers, they had this huge visitor economy. And then they had UTA, which is kind of another input of thermographics, you had the student population and then you've got a limited amount of workforce, they do have kind of an urban core, not much of one, but they have, they have some daytime that's fairly consistent in there. And then you've got this kind of homogeneous, fairly low to moderate income around there. I mean, so the ingredients to make Arlington work, just looking at it from a residential standpoint, if you're a national retailer, wasn't that exciting? So if you're building a market plan and looking at things from a national basis, downtown Arlington might not have popped up on your radar screen. But as you explore the other ingredients that are around and available and articulate those and put those together and then kind of a marketing campaign, the, the other areas that you can pull together start to offset some of the negatives on the residential population and the lack of high income or the lack of, you know, a lot of density. So it's important to understand all the ingredients that are available around these individual retail areas. And you can look at this from a macro basis, but the drivers for Old Town are much different than the drivers on I-35 and around Mr. Ridge Mall and some of these other areas. So you really have to look at location by location, what sort of capture rate you can get on these different drivers.
Jason?
Yes.
Backing up a little bit, Panera Bread, good example. We used to have a Panera Bread in the mall.
Right.
I don't know if you're familiar.
Yeah, it was inside the mall.
Yeah. What, what's among these types of characteristics as they were evaluating their store sales and location decisions would have caused them to shut that one down and go somewhere else?
Did you talk to Terrence about that?
Yeah, we, we visited up Terrence. I know they had an interest in repositioning that store and finding a location.
No, it's not.
No, it was a strategy they pursued and it didn't execute very well. You know, Louisville still has, you know, the opportunity, and I guess this is, I'm glad you brought the question up because I'll give you a little bit more insight onto Panera and this is how a lot of-